Kate, we will call the Williams County Board of County Commissioners meeting for October 17th to order. Roll call, please.
Bo?
Here.
David?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Cory?
Here. We have a quorum. We'll proceed. If everybody would please arise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate brings us to the consent agenda. What are the wishes?
Motion to approve as presented, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried. Under public comment, I see we have one right away that's already listed. So from WSC, Dr. Herning, would you like to give us your update?
We're about halfway through the semester, and so we have passed the census day, as we call it in the university system. And you may have read some of this in Mr. Falcon's article in the Williston Herald recently. But while you never have all green numbers when you're looking at statistics, this fall semester, we had about 90% of our indicators were green for the college. The largest bullet point that we were really pleased with was our incoming freshman number. We had a five and a half percent increase in freshman enrollments year over year, and the largest head count for incoming freshmen in four years. We had 646 incoming freshmen this fall semester. Now, in comparison, if you look at some of the other four-year colleges in the system, Valley City, Mayville, Dickinson State, they average between 250 and 300 incoming freshmen. So for us to have 646, we were incredibly proud of that number. And it was because of the aggressive outreach that we did. We visited every high school in eastern Montana, a face-to-face visit by our recruiters, talked to the senior students there, handed them a flyer on the college to inform them and enroll, and then also a very aggressive marketing campaign. We do a lot of advertising out in Glasgow. We go as far west as Haver, also Billings, and everything east of that line, so to speak, also western North Dakota, from Bismarck to Minot and everything on the west side of that. So a very busy spring semester last year to try to move the needle for the incoming freshman class, and that worked. I mentioned Montana. Those numbers were up eight and a half percent over last year. So very pleased with what happened there. Our dorm was full. First time in three years that the dorm has been full. And so our full-time student population was up right around 3% year over year. And what we get funded on is total number of credit hours scheduled. So you take all the students combined, and 15 hours is a full-time load for a student, and our total credit hour scheduled was just a hair under 2% increase. So as you hear horror stories from throughout the country about declining enrollments, declining this, declining that, we're very pleased to have had so many positive indicators that are showing green going forward for the college. In terms of capital projects, let me turn to that. First of all, one that you, as a group of commissioners in a county, were very vested in was the daycare. Last week, Thursday, I had a member from the State Board of Higher Ed come to visit, and we walked down to the daycare and we did a walkthrough. And first time I'd been in there with kids in the daycare. And if you haven't been there, please stop by and visit. You, as a group of commissioners and working with the city, should be exceedingly proud of what that has become. There are, I believe, five or six rooms that were all full of kids, and it was so organized and so well-coordinated. The board member just stood there and said, "Wow, this is the best that I have seen." And again, it's a learning center, as I shared before. And so the kids that are there are not just there for childcare services, but it's a learning facility. So everywhere you look in those rooms, there is some sort of a learning going on. And it's because of Janie Cox and being the head of that facility. I think they're close at capacity, if not pretty, pretty close to capacity. And so just really, really impressed with what I was able to see. So thank you for your investment in that facility. In terms of the traffic around it, that's one of the things that I was a little bit concerned about because we have the diesel program right next door. The arc has a lot of traffic coming and going all day long. As I visited with the director of the childcare, I said, "Is traffic an issue in the morning or the afternoon?" She said, "Absolutely not." Not one ounce of concern about traffic around that facility. So it was well-planned by JLG, the work done by JE Dunn. Just very, very impressed with how that turned out. The next project, the turf project that we have at the college, to convert our baseball and softball fields to prescription turf. An update on that. The architect was selected for that project. It was Icon. They have an office down in Watford City, and they've done a lot of projects for the university system. And just most recently, the construction manager at risk was selected, and that will be Mammoth. Mammoth has a very, very good reputation in the state. They have done a ton of projects like this in Minot and Grand Forks and Fargo and Bismarck Mandan. So we're very pleased that they were selected for that project. They are basically ready to roll as soon as the baseball season finishes in May of next year and hope to have that project done in about three or four months. And then the last of our capital projects is the biggie. That's the healthcare facility. And an update on that one. As you may or may not have heard, about a week, maybe a little bit more than a week ago, we selected the architect for the project. And we're pleased to say that local architect, JLG architect, was selected for that project. So Nick Lippert and his team, who are very familiar with Williston and with the college, were selected to lead the architectural design for that particular building. We are very, very close to posting our construction manager at risk for the RFQs for that, and we know we'll get a lot of interest and a lot of bids for that. This is a unique project in this part of the state, in this part of the country. It's a big project. And we met yesterday with the architects for the first time. They met with our task force at the college, and they introduced themselves to the task force. And they're, I believe it's the week of the 30th, are going to start doing forums to hear from people about this particular facility. We have a rough draft in place as to what we think it will look like, but we want to hear back from the stakeholders. So there will be open forums for the faculty and staff at the college. We'll talk to the students. And we'll also have a community forum. So you, as commissioners, leaders from the city, and just community members at large, will be able to come in, hear from JLG, and give some feedback as to what your thoughts are in terms of that building. We have identified roughly six programs that are going to be early starters for this facility. So way before we ever open the doors, we want to have half a dozen programs at least launched and students enrolled and starting a revenue stream for that. And one of the first programs that we'll be doing is a program around behavioral health. Every single medical provider that I visited in this region, up to Crosby, Tioga, down to Sydney, Watford City, as well as here in Williston, that's the first thing that came up. We need to have some sort of training around behavioral health services. And so we have a meeting scheduled in the first week of November with the provost and dean of UND, and they are going to be starting the conversation with us to bring a behavioral health program in person here to Williston. They're very excited and very interested in that. That is going to be in addition to some engineering programs that our new VP of Academic Affairs is already working on with UND to deliver in person here in Williston. In addition to that, I talked about the childcare earlier. What I failed to mention was the connection to Valley City State. Valley City State President and Provost came for the ribbon cutting. Your CAO, Ms. Askin, was there, shared some words for that, was able to meet Dr. LeFave. And coming out of the meeting that we had at that ribbon cutting, they have now added two additional teaching education programs to their menu of what they want to offer here in Williston. So that will now be three teacher preparation programs that they are going to be delivering in person here in Williston, starting as early as next fall. And so the appetite is strong from our four-year partners to come to Williston and deliver in-person programs. And our new VP of Academic Affairs, Dr. Atala, who started less than a year ago, has really hit the ground running, and he's making those connections with our four-year partners to deliver in-person classes here at the college. And that will go in addition to what we're already doing with the University of Mary partnership. That is all in person at the college. And the early numbers from President Shea down at University Mary is they have around 55 total students in their programs that started this fall. So he's very pleased with those numbers, and we just hope to build on that with these additional programs here in Williston. So a lot of, lot of good things happening, a lot of work, a lot of excitement, and we look forward to coming back in the spring again and giving an update on all of those. So with that, I will pause and entertain any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. Is there any questions? I think, I think you covered. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming and look forward to hearing how things are in the spring.
My pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's going to bring us to public hearings. The first one is the Rough Rider Disposal Section Line closer, closure. I will open the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments? If you do, please come up to the mic, state your name, and you can go ahead and give your comments.
Some Jason Hicks. I'm from Rough Rider Disposal. Guess I don't have a lot of comments. When I gave you guys everything in the packet, map and explanation, it's kind of what, this is one of the things where we kind of assumed that road, that that little piece of section line was closed, probably been closed for 10 years, and just cleaning up and looking into things, we learned that it wasn't. So we're just trying to get it closed and final. Like I said, it runs right through an active, an active landfill. So, and see the criteria, you know, going to the east, there, you know, there's 60, 80, 100-foot drop-off. So it's not really a, an area where you could, you could build a road going east from there anyways. So... I don't know if you guys had any questions or concerns?
So have we got any questions for Jason?
Yeah. Are you building on this? Or, I mean, you know, are you using it, right, the, the line?
It's, it's used right now, yes, for, that's the way in and out of the landfill. That is currently the, the access for material being hauled into the landfill.
So the reason for closing it would be what, then?
Um, well, it's DE. So the whole thing is regulated by the DEQ. And just, just to keep, just to keep general, just to keep general public from driving in and out of there. We've never had a problem with it, I guess.
The, the, the reason we have these section lines is for access. So I mean, if you want to access it, someone else should be able to also.
Right. And I guess it's, you know, we have the property on both sides of it.
Who owns the property to the east?
Friends. And they currently access it through a different way. And I do also understand that even when a section line is closed, you still have to let adjacent landowners access their property through there, through the state.
Well, no, I mean, if you, if you vacate the section line, then it's gone and you don't, there is no public access. You don't have to grant anybody anything across private property, but...
I think, I have the thing printed off. And then the state statute, I believe it said that you still had to let, it says that you still have to let any, that doesn't preclude any adjacent landowners from being able to access their property through there. It's like anybody that owned a property from the east would still be able to get through there.
Karen, do you have an opinion?
Yep. That would be true, what he said.
Okay.
That even if you close the section line, the adjacent property owners still have access to that area, so...
Just to be a good neighbor, you should do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought once you vacated the section line, it would turn back into private property, and you wouldn't be just like anything else, private property. It's yours, but...
No, it's still a section line, but it's just closed. And at any time, somebody could petition to reopen it, really, so...
But it's closed to the general public.
Yep, that would be correct, except, but then also just want to point out that you need to make sure that you find a public benefit before closing the section line and then...
That was going to be my next thing, is you have to prove a public good, correct?
Yep, the petitioner has to show, and you guys have to find that there's a public benefit in closing the section line.
That was my question. Is there a life safety issue, having traffic going in and out of there?
Yes, I would believe that. And that's kind of the biggest concern is just keeping, it is just, it's an active operating landfill. It's, it's very busy and just don't really want to have people driving in and out of there freely.
Correct me if I heard you correctly. Earlier, you said that it has not been an issue.
No, it's been, correct, and it hasn't been accessed, to my knowledge, by the public for... It hasn't been used as a through road for probably 10 years, but we've only owned it for a little bit over a year. So...
And I assume, because we all know that that section line was there before the disposal?
Correct.
And I would assume when you purchased it, if you did your due, due diligence, you knew that that section line went through that property?
Didn't know that the section line went through there. Didn't know it wasn't closed. There was a, this is one of the ones that just, just kind of, as we're working through things, see that it wasn't. So we're just trying to clean up.
Because I'm going to assume you guys bought the disposal from somebody?
Correct. Yep, from R360, which is a 14 publicly traded company.
Anybody have any more questions for Jason?
What year was the disposal built?
The permit was originally issued in the early 2000s, but the main part of the landfill there was built and got started in about 2011.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
I appreciate your guys' consideration.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on the section line closure? For a third time, is there any comments on the Rough Rider Disposal Section Line closure? Close the public hearing and turn this over to the board.
Mr. Chairman, just a question that came to mind. What type of a disposal is this? Is it liquid or solid waste, or?
I'm going to assure it's solids, but we can sure have Jason give us the answer.
Yes, it is a solid waste. It's a special, special oil-filled waste landfill. So it's, it's not for household garbage. It's, you know, petroleum-based product, like drill cuttings, spills.
So is that wasted detriment to the public?
What's that?
Like, potentially?
As far as...
Well, it, it's not, it's not really hazardous stuff, but I mean, it's, it's, it's like you said, it's just drill cuttings. It's, it can't be liquid.
Correct. It's not, yes, it's not hazardous. There is a, a waste, there is a wastewater, or there is a treatment plant on the facility as well. But yes, it is not a, anything that's classified as, classified as hazardous waste.
Since you're still up here, I, I thought of one other thing. Did you say there are 30 and 40-foot drops inside this landfill?
No, no. I meant to the, going to the east, you know, if you were going to continue...
Still trying. I was still trying to help, but okay, that didn't work.
Yep.
It looks like the layperson here, is this landfill nearing full, and are you expanding it?
Yes, but we are, and it's been, we're expanding it to the north. So it still has a lot of life left. We just finished an expansion, actually.
Kate, any other questions? I don't know, maybe you want to just hang out for a second because somebody might come up with something. But we'll, we'll, we'll let you off the hook for now, but rather than run back and forth, we don't want you to get too many steps in. So back to the original question. What are the wishes of the board?
Well, I, I would, I'm, I'm having trouble coming up with a public good. I, I, I understand the fact that you wouldn't want people just milling back and forth or, you know, traveling through, but I, I just don't, I have, I have a hard time coming up with a public good, so I'd make a motion to deny myself.
All second. Kate, we've got a motion and a second to deny the request. Any discussion?
I, I mean, I guess I think the glaring issue is I don't believe the disposal should have been allowed to build over top of the section line. Is that correct? Yeah?
And I would like to clarify, it's not, it's not built over it. The, it's right on the edge of it. So the...
I understand what you're saying, but this is all the way to the board now.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they're actually disposing on the section line. It's just the fact that I don't really see, if you can come up with a public good, it'd be, I don't know how, but...
Both sides of the section line road, correct? I mean, they're, I would think they're probably driving over that daily. They might not be using it to dispose of, but they're using the other side to dispose. Reason they want to close it, I would assume.
Kate, any other comments? Any other comments from the board? Roll call, Brenda.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
And David?
Yes.
Motion carried, which means the section line closure was denied. I will move on to the tax foreclosures, cities, townships, objections to the minimum bid price set. I believe this is just, this is another public hearing, correct, Karen? Okay. We will open the public hearing. Are there any comments on the cities, townships, objections to minimum by, minimum bid price set? Easy for me to say. Come on up, introduce yourself so we can get you in the minutes, and then you can give us your...
I'm the city auditor, and I'm here on behalf of the city of Wildrose, and we were interested in purchasing the property that is available. So I wasn't really sure what I needed to do, except be here.
Somebody's have to help me out.
That wouldn't really be an objection to the minimum bid price. That would be just exercising the city's right to purchase that property
Yes.
within that 30 days after the minimum bid, our minimum price was set.
Okay.
So does that mean she can come up into the auditor's office and take care of this after the meeting?
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Well, it gets even easier. Look at that.
Look, hey, thank you. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Kate, for a second time, any, anybody else here to object to the minimum bid prices set? Third and final time, objections to minimum bid price set. That'll close the public hearing. Does this one need any action?
For the foreclosure, no.
Kate, now we will move on. Looks like community engagement coordinator.
Good morning. So I have for you today the recommendations for the second cycle of community grant awards. Like the first cycle, this recommendation comes from the finance committee. Previously this year, there was a cycle awarded, and then $300,000 was budgeted for the second cycle. This is the last cycle for this year, and new grants have not been budgeted for next year. For this cycle, we received 20 applications totaling about $1.2 million in eligible requested funds. Again, 300 was budgeted to award, and an individual application could not exceed $100,000. The intention of this program, to separate it from our other grant programs, is for that public purpose and for that public good. So of the, the 20 applications that were received, 11 were recommended for funding, either fully or partially recommended. That was included in your packet. In addition to the recommendation that the finance committee provided to help expedite on a contract end of things, I've also included a suggested funds expiration date. The standard program details are that those funds expire at the end of the year. They have to be reimbursed by the end of the year. But some projects really would warrant that additional time, which is up to the board's discretion, obviously to, to prove that. So I will read the names of those that were recommended. Cal Creek Union Cemetery Association for purchase of equipment. Family Crisis Shelter for replacing a fence. Learning Adventurers Childcare for purchasing their building. Pirates Den Daycare for purchasing equipment. Scully Design Build for roof replacement project on a building downtown. TNC Toes Daycare for equipment and supplies. The Eckert Foundation for Children for a Hooked on Fishing event. The Western Star Foundation, we're providing training for childcare providers. Wildrose Housing for improvements to their housing facility. The Frontier Museum for preservation and restoration activities. And Williston Parks and Rec for resurfacing Harmon Park tennis courts. Parks and Rec for resurfacing Harmon Park tennis courts. So happy to answer any questions, or changes, amendments, et cetera.
Kate, any questions for Lindsay? If none, what are the wishes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to follow the recommendations of the finance committee and approve the project's assistant grant as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Lindsay, would you like to add something?
Could we also include authorizing the chairman to sign the standard agreement?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay, everybody's good with that? Roll call, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss any department heads? Dennis, you don't have anything? No? Anybody else? All right, Helen, come on down.
First and non-position HR item, which is, if you remember at your last meeting, you approved a project to assist some homeowners, but more specifically Williston Township, to do some research on a water issue in Williston Township. We did hear back from the company doing that work, and actually Steve had a more detailed sciency discussion with them than I did, but I do have in front of me a request for them to do one more bit of work. The total fee schedule would be $38,000. I think they've, if I can, tell me if I have this wrong, I think they've narrowed where the source of the water is, but this would more specifically determine the exact source. I did ask, the couple of questions that I asked seemed to determine that to dig in the area, which is likely very muddy, would probably cost about the same amount, and this is less invasive, the hope being it's a little less of a fiasco for everyone if we can figure out exactly where it's coming from.
Go ahead and add something, Steve.
I, the only thing I'd add is, is there was a concern, they wanted to make sure to delineate the difference between potential ground source of, of the water versus leak from a tank and/or pipe. And so this extra bit of work will hopefully determine that it's one or the other, and, and leave little room for argument as to what the source of the water is.
I did actually get on the call with, with Steve and the engineers, and what he says is exactly right, and I, I'm not saying that I didn't have other ideas, that we could probably find a way to farm her through it, but this sounds like the action to take, so then it's, it's done. And then we know what the problem is, and then we can move to that next step, and whoever, whosoever problem it is, can find a way to solve it.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we are, we're assisting citizens, township, landowners to help sort out the problem, but this is not a, we're not going to be able to implement a solution, likely. We're going to be able to hand people a report and say, here's what's going on, and then they got to sort it or, or litigate it, whatever the case may be.
So we, what we would need to do, we would need a motion to approve the 38,000, is it right at that number?
Yep. Let me verify, yep.
$38,000 additional expense to finish it up, get the report out, and then we can get it to all interested parties, and I'm fairly certain it'll be quick. We'll probably have that later in the week, I'm going to guess.
Yeah, I think it's, they worked quick because they didn't want to be caught up in the cold weather, because this is all outdoor work, so, and they had everybody in town, and anyway.
So can I, I'm looking for a motion one way or the other.
I'd make a motion to approve the proposal as presented and complete the work that is necessary.
Hold a second. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, on to the position report. I, I am going to add a request, and then I'm going to hand an updated copy to Brenda for her records. We did have a resignation from a corrections officer yesterday who's relocating back to her home state, and so I would ask for permission to fill that position, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Kate, is there a second? Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes, motion carried.
All right, and then I need you to retroactively make an approval for us. We, we had previously appointed Lindsay Herriman to be our North Dakota State Fair Board Representative, and I will tell you that there are 53 counties, and I believe three representatives from each county. One appointed by the board, one from the local fair board, and then one from the extension office in that county. So Lindsay was planning to go, but her schedule doesn't allow, we don't know until sort of later in the year what the date's going to be, so we're asking that Haley be substituted as our state fair board representative. However, the deadline was, I think, Monday, so we sent it in, and they're now seeking, I know, I know.
We'll, we'll talk later.
And so we're seeking approval for that to make an official, please.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, the motion of forgiveness.
Right, thank you.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
David is my portfolio commissioner, I'm in big, big trouble, huh?
You are, could we do, are you done?
Yeah.
Let's just give a little update on where we're at with the director of dispatch.
Oh, yeah, as we transitioned the Upper Missouri River Regional Dispatch Center to be the Williams County Dispatch Center, we knew that the existing director had given his retirement notice, it was just a question of what that date would be. And although I think we had some indication it was going to be the end of the year, early into the next, he in fact contacted Cory, who is the portfolio commissioner, must have been 10 days ago, said he had accepted another job and would be done at the end of this week. And so we will, Cory and I will be interrumbing as needed, they have, they have experienced, knowledgeable staff there, and so should be able to, to carry on without any disruption in their day-to-day work, any kind of extra complexity that they need a director for. They'll be in touch with Cory and I, we do have some applicants, and intend to do those interviews in the next week or so.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, oh, I can be official now, Steve hinted at it the last time, but we have made a job offer, and it's been accepted to a vector director, and in fact, I spoke with him yesterday, just got a quick update, he's finishing up his current job, and then will be here, I would hope in the next month or so, because we're in the off-season, we have some flexibility, he is moving from Florida, feels like that's where all the mosquito people are, other than here. So he's moving from Florida, so it's a big relocation, just based on how, how he gets things battened up there, once he has finished with his current job, which he's done at the end of the month, then he'll be here. We're excited to have him, we're excited for him to have the winter, to, to get his feet under him, so that we're, we're ready to go in the spring.
Should tell him to hurry, because now is the best time to be the vector director.
That's true. Yep, mosquito counts are low.
Kate, thank you for the update.
Yep.
Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.